Good evening and thank you for being here. My name is Becky Womble and I'm the very proud president of the four-star accredited Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. And it's my honor to welcome you here to this candid forum for Bastrop City Council Place Two and Four. This candid forum is part of our Bastropvotes.com initiative. Tonight's forum is part of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and the purpose is very pure and very simple. It's to promote the vote. And there's three ways that we do that here in Bastrop and Bastrop County. First, we actively register individuals to vote. I hope everybody's registered so you can participate in this election on May 4th. We have a website that's fair, impartial, and insightful, and it's about the candidates seeking elected office. We conduct forums like this so that you can see and hear the candidates themselves before Election Day on Saturday, May 4th. Since the inception of Bastropvotes.com, we've done more than 20 candid forums in person and virtually. It's a really exciting time to be part of Bastrop and Bastrop County because growth is everywhere. New subdivisions mean new rooftops and new job creation through companies like SpaceX, The Boring Company, and TCS Mechanical, just to name a few. Our city manager last night cited some statistics from the census that said that the city of Bastrop plus the 10 miles surrounding Bastrop should have 63,000 people by 2030. Let that sink in a moment. With that inevitable growth, it's important that we have ethical, visionary, energetic leadership. Before we get started, I want you to know that the slate of questions tonight for the forum was gathered from citizen submission, OpenAI Generation. Believe it or not, it works really well. Just type it in and find out for yourself. We also, we're using, we use these questions and we submitted a list to our moderator and he has the sole discretion of which questions he selects. But I want you to know that the questions will never be directed at one individual candidate. They will not be rude or inflammatory, and the questions of similar topics have been combined to prevent repetition of subject matters. Candidates, I'm going to ask you to please speak clearly into your microphones so the viewers watching on Facebook can hear your responses. I don't see it happening here, but if necessary, we will mute your mics if you go over your time limit. The forum will end no later than 8:15 or when all the questions have been asked, whichever comes first. Also, this forum is being recorded and will be posted on Bastropvotes.com, our website, within the next 48 hours. Audience, I will ask that you also please silence your cell phones because that is very disruptive to our candidates. Finally, I need to introduce our facilitators. First, we have Dr. Kristi Lee. She is the Chair of the Government Affairs Team. She's on our Board of Directors and all-around amazing community partner. See, please, round of applause for her. Our moderator is Charlie Stone, and he doesn't want me to read his long list of accomplishments, so I'm just going to pick out a few. He's a veteran. He has a degree in law enforcement. He's a former county judge, and he worked at the state capitol. Is that short enough, Charlie? Okay. Anyways, so he just wanted me to say, here's Charlie. Please welcome our moderator, Charlie Stone.
Well, for once you listen to me. That's great. That's wonderful. So, good to see everyone here tonight. We're going to get right into this because you're not here to hear me, you're here to hear the candidates and what they have to say, so... But first of all, I have to go through the protocols to make sure you understand how this is supposed to be run, so I'll get right into this so we can get into the candidates. So, the candidates have been provided this protocol sheet so they know how this is going to be run tonight. And a candidate who does not attend cannot otherwise be represented either by another individual or a prepared statement. And if only one candidate is in attendance, there will be no forum for that office, and the candidate present will be permitted to make an opening statement. So that paragraph applies tonight to Ms. Meyer over here who is here tonight, so she'll be able to get up and make a statement because the other candidate for Place Two is not here.
There's not a candidate here.
Okay, well, then, okay. Well, lucky you. All right, here we go. All right, so my first mistake tonight, there will be another one probably. I would say, questions will not be made available, and they have not been available to the candidates in advance of the forum. And so here's the time allotments. Each candidate will be allotted the following: a two-minute opening statement, a one-and-a-half-minute response to each question, a one-minute rebuttal for the candidate who has asked the question first, and then at the end of the forum, a two-minute closing statement. And if we do have questions from the floor, each candidate will have one-and-a-half minutes to respond to those questions if time permits. And so the order of the statements and questions are as follows. The opening statements will be determined by alphabetical order for each office. So the first question will be the first responder to the candidate who was second to make his or her opening statement. So subsequent questions will alternate between the two candidates. And to allow time for closing statements, a total of 12 to 16 questions have been selected for tonight. And our timer, Dr. Lee, will keep the candidates and me apprised of the remaining time. And if a candidate is in mid-sentence when the stop sign is shown, he or she may complete the sentence in as few words as possible. And if a candidate attempts to exceed his or her time allotment, the moderator will inform the candidate that the allotted time has expired and direct the forum to continue to the next candidate. So we'll dispense with that, and so we're going to get into opening statements. And as I said before, that first paragraph applies, so Ms. Meyer, we'll let you come up and do a two-minute opening statement for your office, please. And you can use this podium.
So we're going to go a little low with this one. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. First, I want to say thank you so much to the Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity, for all of y'all here and all of who are viewing. I can't believe that it was one year ago that I was running to fill the one-year unexpired term for City Council Place Two. It seems like so much has happened, and it has in the past year, and so much more is going to happen. I look forward to those years of shaping how we want Bastrop to grow because we know it's growing. But how we have it grow is dependent on what we want and what you want as citizens. It's very important to shape that. Last year, one of the dominant issues was the problem that the new building codes had created to the developers, the city, the citizens. Everyone was struggling to apply them to the unprecedented boom in construction that we were experiencing. Well, I'm very pleased to say tonight that in the previous 12 months, a substantial turnaround has occurred. In a large part, it is due to our city manager, Sylvia Correio Trevino. She has done an amazing job and it's been nothing but a thrill to be under Sylvia's leadership because she is molding us the way that we envision Bastrop to be and that we want to be. So thank you to Sylvia. Also, thank you to my fellow council members for the hard work that you put in and serving with you as well. Bastrop is being created. We shape how it's going to grow. How long is this boom going to last? We don't know, but it's here and it's happening and it's continued for a while. I do know, however, in my upcoming three-year term, we'll be sharing the streets with at least 10,000 more people, probably more than that. We have just begun a new program of street maintenance that has gone from a yearly budget of $25,000 to $2.1 million. So thank you so much for your support and have a good evening.
Sorry, I had to stop her, but that's my job. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. All right, so we'll get into the opening remarks, two minutes each, and these are alphabetical, so... And both candidates have told me ahead of time that they would like to be addressed by their first name, so I will call them Jimmy and Carrie. So Jimmy, you get to do it first, so you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Okay, thank you. For the people that are watching that don't know who I am or anything about me, I'll just read off this list and let you know some of the stuff. My name's Jimmy Crouch. I'm a candidate for Bastrop City Council Place Four. I grew up locally in Lockhart and have spent most of my time in Texas, Odessa, Houston, and Plano for eight years each, and then I lived in Salt Lake City for 10 years before I moved back to Bastrop 10 years ago, and I've been in Bastrop now for 10 years. I have four grown kids and two grandkids, which are, mean everything in the world to me, the grandkids. When you get those, those are the best things. I've traveled for my work, which is in commercial construction all over the country. I've built projects in 12 states, completed close to a billion dollars in work. And I started out as a small home builder and have now worked on the largest building under roof in San Antonio and worked on the biggest, tallest building in Austin. I learned early that hard work, strong core values, the importance of education, and a sense of community contribute more to the growth and advancement of a community than anything else. And Bastrop, since I've been here, I've served on the Parks Board, Zoning Board of Adjustments, Construction Standards Board, and now City Council for one term. Bastrop is growing, and we need strong leaders to steer the community in a smart and efficient manner that will meld our rural and soon-to-be urban environment into a vibrant community that complements Bastrop's history and natural resources. I'm not a politician by any means or a public speaker. I genuinely like to help people and love to engage everyone with problem solving and get as many opinions as I can on all topics. I will continue to work hard for the citizens of Bastrop, and my stop sign just went up. So thank you very much.
All right, Carrie, two minutes.
Thank you, Chamber. I made it to the side. Thank you, Government Affairs Committee, and thank you, Charlie. Thanks all for being here. My name is Carrie Fossler. I'm running for Bastrop City Council Place Four because I was born for this. You can verify that with my mother. She's in the third row. I was born for this. I've always been like this, and I'm going to tell you why. What matters to me is vibrancy. I am an investor in the vibrancy of wherever I live. It just so happens that Bastrop has the best, richest soil for investing in vibrancy because the rewards I reap from this investment are mind-blowing. I get to wake up to a life that I love every single day. And as we grow and prosper, we can maintain our vibrancy by ensuring the voices of Bastropians are louder than those with special interests, than those with outside interest over our Bastropians. That is how we keep the culture that we cherish so much as we grow. Number two, I want you to know about my superpower. My superpower is having a huge network of all kinds of people and knowing who to go to for what. I want you in my phone. I want you in my phone. I want to be in your phone, and I want to be able to call you when something that matters to you is up for discussion. That's very, very important to me. It's the reason my business is so wildly successful is because of the people in it, and it's the reason my life is so fulfilling. This is a core value of mine that I was born with and I will never waver on. All kinds of people, all the time. On this, I sleep peacefully, and I will never waver on that. The third thing I want you to know about me is I've been training for this moment. Since the moment I arrived, I've been loving Bastrop out loud for eight years. I spend every day here, all day long, boots on the ground. I've been a member of the Chamber, the Government Affairs, Bastrop Votes, Parks Board, Steering Committee, Bird City, Bastrop Master Gardeners, and this is already my life. And you couldn't pay me to do it this enthusiastically, so you might as well just go ahead and vote for me because I'll be doing it anyway.
Thank you. All right, candidates, can y'all hear everybody okay? Is the sound loud enough? Okay, I want to make sure that's okay. So, the last person to say the opening remark is the first one to get the question. So Carrie, you'll receive the first question. You'll have one-and-a-half minutes on that, and then Jimmy, you have one-and-a-half, and then you have a 90-second response on it. So here we go. This is a pretty standard question, but we want this answered with substance and not a canned response. What is your motivation for running for City Council?
I cannot live with myself if I do not run for City Council. I have been working towards this for a very long time, for about seven years. I just graduated, I just finished course curriculum at the LBJ School, Women's Campaign School, and I have been studying this very moment. But I promised myself and I promised my creator I would not run for this position until it was absolutely bursting out of me. I wanted it to be so clearly coming out of me and so tangible when I interacted with the people that it was absolutely undeniable. This is an undeniable time for me. I could not live with myself if I did not take this action, and that is why, that is my motivation for running for Bastrop City Council.
Okay, Jimmy, I'll repeat these if you want me to repeat it, or do you want me to?
I think I got this one.
Okay, all right.
It was pretty short, so I think I got that one. The reason I originally ran for City Council two-and-a-half years ago was because I saw a broken system for the building and development here and thought that I could help fix those things. And so for the past two-and-a-half years, we've been doing that, and that's really the reason I ran again. We're not finished with the job that we've started, and there's still a lot of work to do, and the development hasn't slowed down here. So I feel like that my experience will help the City Council and help the city, our current city manager, continue the growth and continue to stay ahead of the growth and continue with the infrastructure. There's also, another reason I ran was because of the lack of recreation here. I think it's very important for our kids and children to have places for recreation, to keep them out of trouble, and I think that we can get better quality people to move to Bastrop if we have recreation for their families to come here. So those are very important things to me. We don't really have anything here to offer, to offer a young couple with young kids. And so those are the main reasons that I'm running is just to continue on with what we've been doing. Thank you.
Make sure she has... All right, Carrie, you have another minute if you have anything else you want to add.
It feels luxurious. Yes, I want you to know that I do not have an agenda that I am pushing up here. Yes, I have passions. I feel very passionate about the recreation and health and well-being of our people, but I am not up here fighting for an agenda so hard that I will risk the process and the process. What's important to me is to follow the process of making good decisions here, and I want it to be my very full-time job to listen. That will be my only job is to listen to the people. So I'm not pushing an agenda. I'm listening to the people, and I want you to vote for me so that I can vote for you when I'm up there.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to question number two. We'll go through eight questions, and in the eighth question, we'll take a small break at that time. But here's question number two, and Jimmy, this one's for you first here. So if elected or re-elected in your case, what would you do differently than the current City Council? That's an AI-generated question, okay. So I want you to know that.
I would, doing differently, I would do it, see, if we could do it faster. I, of course, I'm going to like everything that we're doing on City Council right now. I don't like a lot of the things that we're having to do right now, but they're necessary things that somebody's got to do. I don't like being in the spotlight for those reasons. But as far as continuing on with what the City Council's doing right now, I think we're doing a really good job of providing infrastructure for all the development that's coming here, and we're doing a good job with the location for the recreation facilities and the other things that we need. And that's really it. I mean, just continue on with what we're currently doing, I think, is, I'm happy with what everything's, the way it's going right now.
Okay. Sometime we have to make sure we get the timer reset. So Carrie, do you want to repeat the question? Okay. If elected, what would you do differently than the current City Council? And you have a minute and a half.
I think the City Council is doing great things right now. I do sometimes question at what cost. They are succeeding at many things, but I believe the process is getting shortcut in the same time in some of the instances. We are losing good people on our boards and commissions because there's just a criticism, there's a wave of criticism that's sweeping our boards and commissions right now. So I would be extra super cautious and supportive and trusting of our volunteers and our boards and commissions. That is something I would do differently. I would be very loud and clear about my love and support for all of our volunteers because they are the absolute backbone of all the enthusiasm in our town. I would be very mindful of how much we go into executive session and be sure that policy discussions are not being held behind closed doors, but should be held in public. And I would also be mindful of the optics of a quorum because there is great suspicion in this town that many decisions are being held, many decisions are being made behind closed doors before even people get to, before people even get to the dais. So I am here to bring the conversation back to the dais as much as possible, and I feel very passionate about that. That is what I would do differently.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jimmy, you have another minute if you want to add anything?
I don't know, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move to question number three. Carrie, this will be for you first. Would you classify yourself as a pro-growth or anti-growth candidate and why?
I am right in the middle, as you will find me on most things because that is my nature. There is a role for being a facilitator and a role for being a regulator of growth. We do not need to get into government overreach nor overly burdensome regulation. We do not need to get into excessive delays because delays are very expensive and they get passed on to the end-users, which is not what we want. We do need to take healthy pauses when considering all growth. We need to follow the process, and we do not need to legislate from the dais. You don't need to be getting in a hurry and making changes on the fly that bypass the process. Things for growth need to be written, posted 72 hours in advance, opportunity for professional staff and consultants to research and bring it back with a staff recommendation or not, to hear from the public, and then to vote. That is our process. I will follow that process when considering all growth that is before us. So yes, regulating according to our process without delay and without haste. But the developer, this is important to note, the developer can always come back to a meeting that council cannot. We get one chance to do this right, and so it's super important that we take the time without delay, but with proper processes, proper process, proper pauses, pauses, and do the process so that we can facilitate really good growth that we get to inherit and maintain forever and that we're super proud of.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. All right, Jimmy, you have a minute and a half on that one also?
For me, it's kind of a loaded question if I'm pro-growth or anti-growth, and really I'm anti-growth. I would love to see Bastrop stay exactly the way it is right now and live in my little house off of Main Street and never have any more growth, but that's not going to happen. So if you're going to have growth, then I'm for pro-organized growth, and we have to have the growth to be able to pay for all the things that we have. And when I say things that we have, it is streets, water, sewer, everything that the local residents have, and I would like to do it without raising taxes. So if you spend, we have a $100 million bill for streets, we have a $100 million bill, $100 million bill for drainage system here. The only way to pay for that is with the growth and with new property taxes and new places coming to town. So if you don't do that, then you have to raise the taxes on the local residents, and I don't want to do that. We're taxed high enough now, and I would just assume that the developer pay for it to the extent that they can. And I think the street maintenance tax that we just implemented in the past six months is a good example of that because we're getting about $10 million off the last proposed development that we have here in town. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Carrie, you have another minute if you want to add anything?
I'll respond, yes. As a gardener and a lover of nature, I am not resistant to growth. I am pro-growth, just as I am with pro-stage, all stages of life. Growth is a natural part of the life cycle, and yes, we are in a growth stage right now, and I absolutely embrace this and want to do it wisely.
All right, and just for both candidates, if you want me to repeat a question, I'll certainly be glad to do that. And this question, number four, Jimmy, this is for you first, is rather involved, so I'm going to explain it several times because it has multiple parts to it. So in recent months, the City Council has had lots of discussion and agenda items about the contract with Visit Bastrop, the city's destination marketing organization. Now, here come the three parts. Do you feel the city should continue as is and leave it as a vendor for the city of Bastrop? Or number two, do you feel that the city should become part of a city department? Or should the city find another independent contractor to manage the tourism marketing for the city? So there's three parts concerning Visit Bastrop. Do you feel it should continue as is, or should it become part of a city department, or find an independent contractor to manage the tourism marketing in the city, for the
As far as the contract with Visit Bastrop, I feel like the city needs a destination marketing organization to market the city in a positive way. I think that it shouldn't be city-run. The city has enough things to manage without having to manage a marketing organization as well. I do not think that it's been run correctly in the past, more than a year, based on all of the information that we've received in the past six to eight months. There has to be, if there is a third party that is going to run it, they have to provide accountability in their spending, accountability on the organizations that they're supporting and spending the tax dollars, the citizens' tax dollars on. I don't think that the organizations that we sponsor should be questionable whatsoever. If you have an organization that you want to have sponsored, that you should be able to do a Google search for it and nothing profane pop up on your search. So we do need a marketing organization. I do not think it needs to be within the city of Bastrop's control. I do think that we need to have oversight with them and accountability for whoever we choose to run it in the future.
All right. Carrie, do you want me to repeat that?
Nope.
Okay, you have a minute and a half.
I do think Visit Bastrop should continue its operations as a separate organization, as a separate destination marketing organization. This is pretty common, and I'm the current chair of Visit Bastrop. Yes, we've had lots of headlines lately. So, over the past five years, we worked really hard to get our international accreditation through DMAP, and it's really hard to get. It takes a long time. We were one of 205 organizations internationally that has that standard. It's third-party reviewed. Third-party looks at our policies. We actually have award-winning policies, and then we even have the award with distinction, which only 17 destinations across the, it's actually an international thing, have that status. But what, as the board, what, we got too far into the strategic, we got too proud of our accomplishments and recognition as an industry leader, and I don't think we were good enough partners at home to, I just think that's what happened. I think that's, we got a little too far from being really good partners at home, we got too far from the city. We used to present monthly, and then it went to quarterly, and then it went to like as needed, and we just got a little too far away from the city's goals.
So you had to stop there. So Jimmy, you have another minute if you want to add anything to that question?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move to question number five. This is for Carrie first. What do you think of the B3 code and give reasons why you support it? And give reasons why you support it as it is? Or are you in favor of making changes to it to ease the burden of development?
Get my resolution out, stand by. The B3 code, when it came to town, we adopted it in 2018. I was a great believer and supporter of the spirit of the B3 code, and I am still a big believer of the spirit of the B3 code. We had so much community input about people wanting walkable communities, about how we wanted our communities to be built, and what we realized in that, after we adopted it and adopted a big non-conforming status over much of the city, is that like it was new and it was hard for people to get their heads around. So, and we didn't treat it like a living, breathing document. We weren't open to the feedback, and we didn't keep it alive. So we just like stopped, like we passed this really new, hard, difficult thing, and then we didn't provide a knot of training to get our heads wrapped around it. And then we started using MyGov all at the same time. So we had all of these issues kind of mashed together, and we weren't listening to the people. We weren't like adjusting on a dime. We weren't tweaking the code to make it livable for our people. So there was a bottleneck, and it got really, really, it got really, people got really frustrated. But there have been some relief recently passed, and it was July, I think it was July of 2023, there were three relief measures that were passed that have been super helpful. It is the precedent, like if there's, if you're trying to do something in your property and it's happening within 500 feet of your property, then you can do that. It can be an administrative approval, which is fantastic. And then there's other, there were two other things that provided relief through the current code, makes it more workable.
All right. Okay, Jimmy, same question? Do you want me to repeat it for you?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
All right. What do you think of the B3 code? And give reasons why you support it as it is? Or are you in favor of making changes to it to ease the burden of development?
Obviously, I'm not, I'm in favor of the intent of the code. I'm not in favor of the B3 code, the way it's written, or the processes that it takes to run it. I think it's, it was implemented without any preparation, anybody experienced to put it in place. I think it ruined customer service as far as the permitting and the processing for all of that with the city, and that's why really all of the members of current city council have run for office is because of the problems generated from the code and the process. What the code does, and I can use the hill as an example that everybody's been talking about currently, if that project was built per the B3 code, it would have close to 30 buildings, five stories tall, and it would take up the entire side of the hill. There would be a road every 330 feet, and the buildings would be 15 feet from the curb. And I don't think that's a property or development that anybody can really like or want to see up there. I think that you should have more green spaces. I think that the way we're changing the code currently to add PDDs to get special districts with green space would be a lot better way to do that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, time's up. So Carrie, you have another minute?
Yes, I'd like to add to that. Yes, I know more changes to B3 are upon us, and I did want to mention the four relief things that have been passed since then. The PDD, the Plan Development District, which is, provides an alternative way through the current code. I want to give props to the city manager. She built a whole customer service team at Planning and Development now, so there are, there's a friendly welcoming call that will usually get you to the right place, and they'll also provide online technical support if you're not able to do the MyGov online. And then the passing relief, like I said, some measures about the 500, the 500-foot radius for precedent. So with those things, I'm so grateful those things have been done because now we can look at what was customer service, what was processed, what's the actual code. And now that we've had some relief in place, we can actually look at the code with clarity and see what still needs to be changed. But before, we were lumping in the customer service piece and the technical difficulties. But now we can actually look at what needs, what is left that needs to be changed in the code. We can see that clearly.
Okay, thank you. All right, question number six. Jimmy, I think you've already hinted on this one, but here's the question. Tell us your thoughts on the Gateway Project. Is this good or damaging to the greater Bastrop area?
The Gateway Project, as it's currently designed, needs a lot of work. It has gone through planning and zoning, it has gone through city council. The things that it needs to have, which were listed, is all the environmental studies, the toad habitat study, the tree study, the traffic impact analysis, and the drainage study. That project can't be built without all those four things in place. You can't affect the environment, you can't affect the drainage here. You have to do a full traffic impact analysis. You can't finish designing all your streets and entrances and exits off of that project without the proper studies done. And so there's still a lot of, even though the PDD was approved to put that project up there, there's still a lot of processes and information that's required to get it finished. Is it good for Bastrop? It will add sales tax, it will add grocery stores, it will add retail, it will add potentially affordable housing, it will add a lot of things to Bastrop that we desperately need, and it kind of can parallel the Pearl River development on the opposite side of town, and then hopefully with a vibrant downtown in the center of it that everybody can enjoy.
Carrie, you want me to read the question again?
Please.
Okay. Tell us your thoughts on the Gateway Project. Is this good or damaging to the greater Bastrop area?
All these either-or questions, it's either this or that. It's not quite that. Just to be clear, the PDD was not passed. I think he just said the PDD was passed. It was not. It made it through P and Z, and it went to council last night, and they remanded it back to P and Z. So the PDD has not been passed. It is back to P and Z, and will be up in public hearing, and will be up for discussion again. It is an interesting concept. That kind of development, that kind of holistic development, I think would be good for Bastrop, that kind, not necessarily in that place, but I do like the idea of higher density and less sprawl. And so, because I just hear people over and over, like I want to be, I want to live in a walkable, I want to be able to walk to my amenities, I want to be able to, just like the walkable where all my services are right there, childcare, healthcare, people want that. I hear that as a real estate agent, I get calls for that all the time. I want to be close to resources. So I like the idea of it. It is a very geographically sensitive area, very, very geographically sensitive, and they're asking for even more impervious cover. They're asking to bump it from 70 to 80%, and that would be zoning to 90%. They're asking for 90% impervious cover for a very geographically sensitive area. So I do not think that is appropriate at all. That's one of my requests, is that they come back to at least 80% and maybe down to 70%. But on a hill that's known for runoff, like we don't need to be given 90% concrete to that situation. So I am...
Time's up. Okay, Jimmy, you have another minute if you want to add anything to it?
I do. I don't like the idea of the high density and less sprawl for the central part of Bastrop. So on infill development within the old historic part of Bastrop, I'm not all for some of the old existing houses that have a lot of land with them, putting four or five units, being able to do that, and adding to the traffic in the area, the drainage spill off in the area, and then having to try to accommodate for that, for something that it was never designed for 50 to 100 years ago. The old part of Bastrop doesn't have the infrastructure, the drainage, or the streets to support that, and so I really don't like the B3 code, which was partially done for that so that you could have walkability and then infill some lots in downtown Bastrop. I don't like it in that area. Thanks.
All right. Question number seven, Carrie, this is for you first. How do you propose to balance economic development that is undeniably coming this way while preserving the character, charm, and affordability of our community?
Repeat the first part of that?
Sure.
How do we balance?
Yeah, how do you propose to balance economic development that is undeniably coming this way while preserving the character, charm, and affordability of our community?
That is the dance. That's the dance of life that we're doing right here in this growing town. That balance is, if, it's right here, it's right here on my flyer that you all got, well-planned infrastructure, recreation, healthcare, and housing for people of all ages. That is the secret for how we're going to be able to keep our people here who carry the culture of Bastrop. When they start getting priced out of the, when they start getting priced out, that's what we need to plan for, is the growth that is coming and being able to plan for all ages, to be all cycles of life to be able here, all the stages of life here, all the people who've fought for the sidewalks, it took us seven years to get sidewalks, they want to stay in town and enjoy the sidewalks. They don't want to be pushed out into a facility. We need to have, plan for all the stages of life to be able to age gracefully in Bastrop. That is the way, that is the way that we keep that vibrant.
Okay. Jimmy, you want me to read the question again?
Yes, sir.
How do you propose to balance economic development that is undeniably coming this way while preserving the character, charm, and affordability of our community?
I think, and we've kind of touched on it with all the, all the other questions, you have to provide something for people to want to move to Bastrop. Our historic downtown is something that nobody else has. There's hardly any towns in the area that have a river running through the middle of them, and off the beaten path, we're not directly on Highway 71. So our downtown is very important for people to come to Bastrop and to want to move here. We have to support the recreation. Like I said earlier, if we don't have recreation, we're not going to get good citizens here or people that want to move their families here and stay here for any length of time. So I don't think we want to be a transient city. I think we want to have families here, and in order to do that, we need to have, we had to have a lot of recreation here for that. As far as balancing the economic development piece of it, we have to have our infrastructure paid for, and that can't be done unless we're providing the services to those developments to come here. So all that infrastructure has to be in place, which the majority of it is, or in the planning stages. So I think we're doing a good job of that right now.
All right, Carrie, you have another minute?
One of the beauties of Bastrop is our location, us being so close to it, a national airport, but then so close to the Colorado River, too. And as we focus on economic develop, we also need to be focusing on our natural resources. We are so rich in natural resources already, and that's some of the things we're working on, is wayfinding, set signs to the, signs to the river, signs to the beautiful places, building out trails and connectivity. So as we invest in business economics, we need to be also investing in our natural rich resources around us and preserving those. That's a way to keep the balance as well.
All right, question number eight. Jimmy, this is for you first. What strategies do you have to ensure transparency and accountability in local government?
Can you repeat it again?
I sure can. Yes, sir. Yeah, what strategies do you have to ensure transparency and accountability in local government?
I think the only way you can provide transparency is to be transparent with it. We have open meetings, we have open dialogue, we have public forums, we do all the things that you're supposed to do as far as trying to be transparent. When people call and ask you a question, you have to, you have to answer them. I try to reach out to as many people as I possibly can, either in person or by phone. I try to get as many opinions as I possibly can, and that's the only way you can be transparent. If you're hiding, I, there was a comment earlier about too many executive sessions. I don't think there's too many executive sessions, or some things that has to happen in executive session. We're not going behind doors to hide anything from the public. I think if you have a conversation with the city manager or city staff, or want to have a meeting with any of them, that they're very accommodating and would go out of their way, and do go out of their way to let everybody know what's going on and what they need to have. I think our social media, the city's social media does a really good job of being transparent and letting everyone know of the meetings and places and times to be at things. So I think we're doing a good job of that now.
All right, Carrie?
Sure.
What strategies do you have to ensure transparency and accountability in local government?
Transparency doesn't need a strategy. It just is. Openness, was that the last one? Was that the second one?
Accountability.
Accountability.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we have our city charter, we have our focus areas, we have all of our processes set out before us that we follow. It's all laid out. It's pretty clear.
Okay. Jimmy, you have anything else you want to add?
No, sir.
Well, I think y'all want to take a break, don't you? Because that's question number eight, and we're supposed to take a break after eight. So Becky's on the way back up here, so we'll turn it back over to her right now.
I'm going to give the candidates just a break to take, drink water, take a deep breath and before we move on, but I want to share some very important dates with you. So first of all, we have early voting coming up, Monday, April 22nd through April 26th. The time is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then April 29th and 30th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with Election Day on Saturday, May 4th. Voting locations are on bastropvotes.com, and you can get the locations under the voter information tab, or you can watch our email blast if you're a member of the chamber or want to subscribe to our chamber email blast. To save time, I highly suggest that you print out a ballot before you go to the polls. Inevitably, there is something on the ballot that you did not realize was going to be on the ballot, an office we're electing for, a constitutional amendment, and I'm going to tell you that for the first time in Texas history, we are electing for three seats on the Bastrop Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Previously, that board has been appointed by the taxing entities, but last session, they decided to make three of those seats elected positions. I highly recommend that you do your homework before you go to the polls and vote on those three seats. In accordance to state law, you will not be permitted to take in a cell phone or a tablet. You can take in a paper ballot. So please take that to the polls, and again, do your homework before you go. So, candidates, did you get a drink of water?
Yeah.
Take a deep breath?
Good.
Ready for the second half?
Half, it's just half over.
Just half over, just half. So please welcome back to the podium Judge Stone.
Becky, we're going to do any questions from the floor?
Yes, I will take those up now.
Okay. So if you have questions you want to submit, Becky will pick those up. Now come the easy questions. Not really, anyway. Question number nine. Carrie, you get this one first. Tell the audience something you admire about your opponent.
I admire, I admire that Jimmy... I admire, I admire that Jimmy is laser-focused on success. Especially the success of developers.
Okay, we'll move to Jimmy. Tell us something you admire about your opponent.
I, I've known Carrie almost since I've, the entire time I've been in Bash Drop. And I, I've met her since the day I liked her. She's very personable, she's very outgoing, she's very upbeat, and all, all great, all great qualities. She has a sense of wanting to serve, obviously. I think we both have that. But I, she has a sense to want to serve, and serves on as many things as she can. So I, I like all those qualities in, in Carrie.
Okay. You can think. One more thing?
Yes, yes. Jimmy, I have been on the Parks Board together for two rounds now, and I appreciate that we both share that value for the outdoors and recreation for all the people of all the ages. We share that.
All right, question 10. Jimmy, this is for you. On the flip side, why are you a better candidate than your opponent?
I, I think I'm a better candidate just because of my experience with what I, what I do and what I've done for the past 40 years in my, my work experience. So I've been exposed to a lot of development, a lot of ways to do development. That's how I first recognized that the city had issues with their planning and development departments. They, they were very broken, and they weren't customer-oriented. And I think if you talk to anybody that goes in there now to get a building permit, or to get anything done in those departments, that the staff has been, new staff added. The attitude and the atmosphere is totally different in the, in the city when you go to get something. And I feel that the hiring of the city manager that we hired, there was a reason we hired her over the other candidates, and it's because of her experience with the development and her openness with what we've got. So I guess that's it.
All right, Carrie, why are you a better candidate than your opponent?
I am a better candidate because I spend every day, all day long, in Bash Drop, Texas. I am widely available and ever-present, omnipresent, some would say, to everything that's going on in Bash Drop. I'm already at all the meetings, I'm already, I don't get to go in an executive session, but I'm at most of the meetings, I stream all the meetings, I keep up with everything. I, you can always trust me to take a pause and be thoughtful. I'm not going to have knee-jerk reactions. I think there have been some knee-jerk reactions recently and assumptions that could have been handled with direct conversations. So you can always trust me to be thoughtful, and to take a pause, and to ask good questions, and to be right here at the beck and call of Bash Dropians all day long, every day, as I have for the past eight years since I arrived.
All right, Jimmy, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I, I'll just add that I, I also am in Bash Drop every day, and I attend every function that I possibly can. So I, I, I'm not unavailable. I try to contact as many people and get as many responses I, as I can to questions or concerns. And I always call and ask multiple people their opinions on things. Old, older people that have been here for a long time, to see what they think. And I'll use the Gateway Development again for an example for that. And not, not really anybody has said that they don't want that. They don't want develop in general, development in general, but they don't mind if it's organized, and if we get something out of it, and we're not incentivizing it and losing money on it. So those are some other things, I guess. Thanks.
All right, question number 11. Carrie, this is for you first. What steps will you take to foster collaboration and constructive dialogue between city council members and the business community to effectively address our city's growth challenges? Sure. What steps will you take to foster collaboration and constructive dialogue between city council members and the business community to effectively address our city's growth challenges?
Well, that's a, a good one, because I've been living it already. I already have relationships with all the small business owners. And most of the small business owners, there are some, a few new ones, because we don't have any vacancy right now. So there are a few that I don't know as well as the others. So continuing to be present, but a more, instead of just regular open-ended questions and regular visiting their businesses and having conversations with them, maybe have like a, an informal survey, so I can be asking the same questions of all the people and have a regular schedule of visiting everybody. Because one of my things, my favorite things about living in Bash Drop is being able to ride my bicycle everywhere. And sometimes I'll spend like seven hours on Main Street, like, just getting from there to there, because I'm talking to all the people and the shop owners. So I would just be more diligent about that, and have more structured about the questions I'm asking. And then also bringing, summarizing the, the trends, and bringing those to city council for discussion as well. Yeah, I'm already collaborative by nature, and I'm already in most of those relationships. So just continuation of that.
All right, Jimmy, you want me to repeat that one?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's no problem. No, so no, no points off here. What steps will you take to foster collaboration and constructive dialogue between city council members and the business community to effectively address our city's growth challenges?
I, I guess there's, as when you speak of the business community, there's existing businesses, and there's future businesses that are coming here. And you really have to, with all the development that is going to come here, you have to visit with all of the business owners that are currently here to see what you're going to do to hurt their business, or, or help their business. I think there needs to be more parking downtown. You have to have, with the new developments that are coming on the outskirts of town, we really need to visit with and, and collaborate with the businesses downtown to make sure that we're not hurting them by bringing in these outside businesses that are right on the edge of town. We don't want people just going to the new areas and then forgetting about downtown Bash Drop. The other thing is getting our infrastructure paid for. And I'll use Boring Company and SpaceX as an example of that. We're collaborating with the new businesses coming in. So we're offering our wastewater and sewer treatment and water services available to them, as long as they pay for their share to get it out there. So I think that getting them to pay for that infrastructure to come out is going to help us pay for our infrastructure that we need for the city.
All right.
May I?
Yeah, you want me to read it again?
No.
Okay. Question 12, go for it.
Another interesting group of people to talk to are the people who choose, chose to not have their businesses here in Bash Drop, or who chose to leave Bash Drop. That's also a very valuable group to speak to and to get their feedback about why they chose to leave.
All right. Question 12, Jimmy, this is for you first here. How do you envision the future of our city, and what long-term goals do you hope to achieve if re-elected to your office?
The, the future of Bash Drop, I think, is, is as good as it could possibly be. I think that we've delayed growth as long as you can delay it, maybe too long. We're prepared for it. The, the city council members before us started a wastewater treatment plant, and we've got water wells now, so the infrastructure is being put in. We're looking at extending Wi-Fi, broadband, and all the other infrastructure that you need to support new residents and new people coming in. So I, I think we're doing all the things that we, that we need to do to accommodate that. Can you repeat it one more time? I want to make sure.
Sure. How do you envision the future of our city, and what long-term goals do you hope to achieve if elected to office?
Long-term goals is just to make it sustainable for us and our kids and our grandkids to live here in the, in the future.
I turned it off. I did turn it off. I'm sorry. Maybe I don't know how to turn it off. I don't know. Sorry. Sorry.
And that was it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry about that. I apologize. Carrie, do you want me to reread the question again? Okay. How do you envision the future of our city, and what long-term goals do you hope to achieve if elected to office?
The long-term goal is that we can still maintain our howdy culture, our friendly culture, through all the growth and prosperity that's coming. That's very important to me, and it's important to everyone I speak with. Also, a long-term goal would be to build a regional sports complex with an Olympic-sized indoor pool for the community and for those who participate in sharing of the cost of that, if we could get that done. I know the way it's proposed now, the community would only have proportional access to it to the part which they contribute. But having that in our town would be fantastic, not only for the residents here and the community members who can enjoy their proportional share, but for also, a regional sports complex can actually pay for itself. It does generate funds. It's one of the few things that, in recreation land, that, that does pay for itself because of the visiting tournaments, and soccer, soccer, baseball, all the, the tournament circuit. So that's a huge, long-term goal of mine. And every one of the, every one of the communities that's been on the Parks and Master Plan for, since 2008. I went back and read that one, back, even on 2008. So we're going to get it.
All right, Jimmy, you want to add anything to that?
I, I agree 100% with the recreation. We've talked about it and mentioned it several times, but a full recreation center and a sports complex is desperately needed here, and is needed for a long, long time. So I agree 100% with that.
All right, well, that's question number 12, and here's an opportunity for questions from the floor. All right. All right, so these, the only answers to these are just a minute and a half, no rebuttal on it. So just, you have a minute and a half response on these. So, so this will be, Carrie, this will be your first one right here. All right. As a city council person, you represent areas outside of downtown, including the ETJ. How do you connect with and represent them when it comes to growth, especially when it comes to roads and other infrastructure? Yeah. As a city council person, you will represent areas outside of downtown, including the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So how do you connect with and represent them when it comes to growth, especially when it comes to roads and other infrastructure?
I would do what I've always done. I'd go on, on listening tour. I'd go visit with the people. Listen, mainly listening, 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 listening to the developers, listening to all the partners that, that are in the ETJ. ETJ is kind of an interesting area, because they have to follow our guidelines for certain subdivisions and regulations, in hopes that like maybe one day, we will have an annex agreement. So it's good to go ahead and get things built out in the ETJ according to our standards. So in case we do ever get in an annex agreement with them, that they would be seamless into our, into our infrastructure. So yeah, just more relationships. Relationships are the, are the key for everything. Relationships.
Okay, Jimmy, you want me to repeat it? Okay. As, as a city council person, you represent areas outside of downtown, including the ETJ. How do you connect with and represent them when it comes to growth, especially when it comes to roads and other infrastructure?
Communication with people and developers out, outside of the city limits. They want fire and police. They don't have it unless they're in the city limits. If they're going to expand into the city limits, then we have to provide that infrastructure for them. So that's one of the things that they want by coming into the city limits. I know that we've talked about recently hot scotching and getting water and sewer to developments that are in the ETJ. And by doing that, then you're adding, again, sales tax, property tax revenue to the city, so that you can afford to pay for the water and fire and police services out to them. The movie studio was an example of them wanting to come into the city limits, but we can't provide the infrastructure for them. But we still have an agreement with them to, for them to come into the city and do workforce development for the employees that are going to be out there. So that's just one way we can help, have them help us with our, with our infrastructure. Thanks.
Okay, no rebuttal on that, so we'll go to question 14, and Jimmy, this one, you get to start with this one. So do you think there is adequate parking in downtown Bash Drop, and what can the city do?
There's not adequate parking downtown. We've talked about adding parking structures downtown. I think they're desperately needed. It wasn't designed to have as many people that's going to come there. If we add these developments on the edges of downtown, we're not going to be able to support it. We'll have to either commute people or trolley people into, into the city. We've looked at parking structures, multiple-story parking structures, and I think that's going to be something that's going to have to be done in the very, very near future. And then again, we have to pay for all of it. All the things we've talked about tonight all have to be paid for by somebody, and they're all very expensive. So if you put a five-story parking structure, or even a three-story parking structure, any of the vacant lots that are in the downtown area, it's very expensive, and we have to be able to pay for them. But it's something that's desperately needed, and once it's there, then it'll just bring more revenue, more sales tax, and more people to the businesses downtown to help them out.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing. We, we talked about, I got 15 seconds?
Yes.
We talked about, one of the parking structures could be next to the library, and if it was tall enough, we could put a restaurant or some other type of retail on the bottom floor, with a restaurant on top, to look both ways down the river. And I, I thought that was a very good idea for a parking structure.
Okay. So no rebuttal on this, so Carrie, you get the last word on this question. Do you think there's adequate parking in downtown Bash Drop, and, and what can the city do?
There is not currently adequate parking in downtown Bash Drop. It's also one of the reasons I ride my bike. And I've heard this being talked about for years, but what I haven't seen yet is a feasibility study for a parking garage. Just like we got a grant, and the BDCA gave, gave us some funds to study the feasibility of a sports complex during the Parks and Master Plan process. And now we are already using that information and headed down that path. We need the same kind of hard facts behind a parking garage. This amount of dollars for this amount of spaces is the kind of information that the public needs, and perhaps they would even pass a bond for it. But until we have a study that shows where and how much, we'll just probably continue to talk about it. We could also look at all of our valuable spaces, our underutilized spaces, and evenly privately-held spaces, to see what kind of relief we can get in the meantime through collaborations. Similar conversations as our busting-at-the-seams rec center, where we're all out looking for space, director, staff, teachers, and students. We're all having conversations in the community with our networks to temporarily rent more space while we do big things that take more time. So I think we need that same, similar kind of approach with finding a parking solution. Some temporary relief in the, in the short term while we work on big stuff that will help us in the long term.
All right, so we are ready for closing statements, and so we reverse from the beginning. So Carrie, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
This is a time for graceful leadership. This is a time for bilingual leadership. Truly, not only English and Spanish, but also the dual language of logistics and emotional wisdom. I have been through the hardest eight months of my entire adult life here in Bash Drop, as, and the entire city has been through a very hard time. I can guarantee you, it was not without deep learning about humanity, humility, and courage. I've seen things that would most people, make most people run away, but I am not. I've seen things that would most people, make most people run away, but I am not running away. I am running right into the heart of the matter, which is directly into the heart of Bashdrop. With knowledge and awareness comes responsibility. All of these experiences have shaped me into a sturdier leader. Yes, I take pauses to be thoughtful. Yes, I seagull, seek legal advice now all the time, but you will not see me making knee-jerk reactions. You can count on me to be thoughtful, you can count on me to ask questions, you can count on me to listen to you, you can count on me to engage the public every opportunity I get, and you can count on me to follow the process. You can count on me to suspend my desire to be right for the greater good of this community. I am collaborative by nature, I am a team player, I have no agenda to push. I am known to be a caring person, but you know what? Caring only gets you so far. There are many people who care about Bashdrop, but at the end of the day, I've come to realize that it's only votes that matter. And as few as three votes on council can have a huge impact on our daily lives. So vote for me so I can vote for you.
Thank you, Carrie. Jimmy, you have two minutes to make your closing remarks.
I, I think my closing remarks are that I, I moved here 10 years ago and I, I fell in love with this city and I've been trying to do everything I can possibly do to make it a, a better city and to establish the growth here and to make it a, a more livable, friendly place. And it can't get much more livable and friendly than, than when I got here. I, I think that I've done a good job the past three years. There's a lot of personal sacrifices that you make whenever you come into public office that I wasn't aware of that you were going to have to make. And I'm, I've sacrificed that piece of it and I want to continue to do that because I don't feel like that we're finished, that, that this piece of, of growing Bashdrop is finished. It needs to continue, it needs to continue without raising taxes on the, the current citizens, and we need to fix the things that were broken before I, I came on to council. And streets is one. Anybody that drives down the street in downtown Bashdrop, we ignored the streets, we ignored the infrastructure for a long time. We're paying for that now. We have a $100 million drainage bill, we have a $100 million street bill to fix our streets. And we have got to get that paid for without raising taxes in the city to our current residents. And the only way to do that is with the, the growth that we're experiencing and to keep that incentive or the sales and, and property tax revenue coming in. So I think we, I've done a good job, I think the council's done a good job. And there are tough decisions that you have to make every day. They're not popular decisions that you have to make every day, but they have to be made. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. This has been a very good forum tonight because you people of Bashdrop have very, two very good candidates here. Let's give them a round of applause. Very good candidates.
You know what's really cool is that like Carrie, Carrie's been here eight years, Jimmy's been here 10 years, you know, I'm looking at other people in the audience who've been here around the same time I've been here, 10 years, but then there's Bashropians that have been here, Cheryl and Cynthia, who've been here generations, but day one, you're always a Bashropian, day one. So very cool to, to see the dynamics in here tonight. Anyways, I need to recognize a few individuals who made tonight happen. First, I want to recognize Corneon Bailey. He's our communications and media manager at the Bashdrop Chamber of Commerce. He was on the job, I think, three weeks last year when he was standing back there trying to figure out the V-deck or whatever the hell it is back there. So that was giving us all kinds of feedback and I was getting all kinds of text messages on my phone. So he's done a fabulous job and he's trying to close on a house over there in San Marcos so he can be our next Bashropian. So Corneon, thank you very much. Jamie Haney, my right-hand man, our VP at the chamber, thank you for your support and keeping us all online and keeping us scheduled and having our master planning scheduled so that we can stay, you know, lock and step. So thank you very much for being here. And then I need to thank our government affairs committee led by Dr. Christie Lee, who volunteered to be here tonight as our timekeeper. Anyways, and I really appreciate our board of directors for supporting this initiative. And our board of directors is led this year by Jace Jones. You can give him a round of applause, he's a cool guy. And then lastly, Charlie, I need to say thank you for your professionalism. I think we figured out today that this is about six years now that we've been doing this together. So I appreciate your professionalism and dedication to this initiative and just providing this service to the citizens of Bashdrop as well as Bashdrop County. And then I need to thank these two candidates. I appreciate you trusting us and putting, putting on this professional candidate forum and giving this information to the citizens of Bashdrop and educating the voters out there. You do have options on May 4th. It's not easy. I'm glad I don't have to vote in this election because I think we have two amazing candidates sitting here tonight, so I'm glad I don't have to make a decision. But I think they did a fabulous job, so please give them a round of applause. In December of 2015, this was just an idea that we kicked off on January 1st, 2016, and I don't know why in the heck that we did that in 2016, but we did. Maybe because Kevin Pluckett was on the government affairs and chairing the committee at that time, but anyways, it was just a good idea and it's a wonderful initiative that is making an impact on our elected representation. Our county is at a crossroads, and so the decisions that our elected officials make today are extremely important. So I hope you will evaluate your options, you will do your homework, you will investigate the candidates and choose wisely. As was mentioned, local elections affect us the most and they can be two or three votes difference. So please visit bashdropvotes.com for more information about the upcoming elections before you head to the polls. Thank you for watching online, and for those in the audience, please have a safe trip home. Good night.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I missed that one, that was a lot.